Good afternoon and welcome to the informational meeting, Tuesday, September 6, 2022. As usual, our agenda is very full today and with the indulgence of the council, I would like to push our committee reports and council remarks to the end if we have time. So we're going to give full attention, we're going to jump right into it. For the presentations, Experience Sioux Falls, the bid interim budget, please come forward, Terry.
Good afternoon, everyone. How's everybody? Krista's gonna run the PowerPoint, and I believe you have it on your computers, I hope. Okay. All right, I'll watch my clock and keep this under time, Mr. Chairman. Okay, you have your packet in front of you. My name is Terry Schmidt, I'm with Experience Sioux Falls. The crew from Experience Sioux Falls that makes it all happen is right here. The whole team is here today to present our budget to you for the coming months and year. Thank you for letting us be here, we do enjoy being able to share and always hope for more time that we can get into the weeds with you a little bit about what we do, but we know today is a quick one. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, as most of you know us, is now Experience Sioux Falls. We went through a strategic plan and ended up changing our name and doing some other things a little bit differently to move us forward in the marketplace. We are now called Experience Sioux Falls, but we are a destination marketing organization. That's the new lingo for Convention and Visitors Bureau, although you still hear, you still hear both of them out there. We are charged with bringing visitors to Sioux Falls, whether it's a convention goer, a bus tour, someone coming in for medical attention, vacationing, a sporting event, any kind of visitor, that's who we're after to bring in so we can create economic development for the community. In 2011, the bid was created, and it was created by the hotels in Sioux Falls because they realized that we didn't have enough funding in order to compete. And so they taxed themselves $2 per room per night for every hotel with 40-plus rooms. And that's how we got the bid. That, along with the 1% room tax, is what funds us. We are not membership, we don't get money from anyplace else. It's kind of an incentive in a way, because the more we can sell, the more tax will be generated, especially the bid and the more budget we have to turn around and invest in Sioux Falls. So the funding, as I said, is by the $2 per room per night of every hotel room sold, as well as the 1% room tax. Right now, there are 57 hotels in Sioux Falls and 5,168 sleeping rooms. So our job is to fill those rooms. We also know that they stay in the hotel, they pay their tax, that bid tax goes then to the city, the city takes care of it business-wise, and then they forward it on to us. We know there are three hotels, we believe, that are on the docket that are coming, the Aloft, 107 rooms, but we don't know a date for that yet. The Canopy at Sioux Steel, 216 rooms, and they anticipate, as far as we know, to be open the second quarter of 2024. And then the Comfort Inn out at the Sanford Sports Complex, 86 rooms, the second quarter of 2024 as well. And then the Clubhouse is adding rooms, we're told, anywhere from 44 to 100 rooms. So there's a little leeway in there, and they're doing that in 2023. So that's going to add to our inventory, allow us to sell more, and be able to bring in more business. Looking at economic impact of what we do, if, I'm not going to read all that to you, but in 2019, you can see, we were off for a banner year. It was going to be a great year, and then you know what happened. COVID hit, and in 2020, we went downhill. Numbers support that, that you could see on the chart. 2021, we bounced back up with a million two in visitors. And when I talk about the number of visitors we have, please understand that I'm only talking about the ones that we can count. We know there are a lot more people coming into Sioux Falls, but if we can't count them, we don't chart them. It's just that simple. And then in 2022, this year, January through July, numbers, as you can see on the chart, we're at 898,000 visitors, economic impact to the community at $318 million. Are we gonna hit 2021 numbers? I sure hope so. We've got a little time left, a few months left, so we're pounding the pavement to make that happen. Okay, moving on to hotel tax, you can see what is generated by the bid tax, which is in the brighter pink column. Again, that, that shows you 19 good, 20, we went down with COVID, 21, we bounced back up, and 22, through June, is what we have right now, because we receive our money a couple of months after it is collected. But through June, we're a million four, and as I said earlier, we're pushing to, to beat 2021. As you all know, summer is kind of wrapping up, so it will be a different kind of traveler now to get us through the rest of the year, but it, it seems to be that things are still moving, so we are hopeful. All right, moving on to the next one, this is really interesting. Star is a company where we have a membership and we can get all the real data from them. This is what we call our comp set or our competitive set. Look at that. We like it because we're at the top. 66.2% year-to-date occupancy. We wish it was up in the 80s, but reality is, that's what it is. You know, like Fargo's not far behind, really, nobody's too far behind anybody, but it's still good to see Sioux Falls running at the top. You could see from 2020, though, a 45.6% change. Not bad. Looking at the next one, the next slide is the average daily rate, or what we call the ADR. Little different story there, we're not at the top. However, I can tell you that from daily Star reports, that our weekends will trend much higher than what that is showing, and then during the week, if we get some down days, especially like a Sunday night, it will bounce down quite a bit, and it ends up averaging, at least as of now, at $109. Okay, moving on then to the real reason we are here, and I am going to pull out, all right. You have the budgets in front of you. The first one is October through December. And today, I'm going to talk to you about two different budgets, because we're transitioning, as you all know, from being under the Chamber of Commerce to being an independent organization. Actually, we're there now. The transition is done, and now we're on our feet and we're going. So what happens now is to get us on the same calendar year as you all, we will, we wrote a second budget, or a first budget, October, November, December, which is what you have in front of you. And then next, we're going to talk about 2023. So very briefly, and please feel free to ask any questions that you would like, I want to, I want you to look at the bid, and it says bid budget summary, October-December. We're looking at, we're, we're doing some guest meeting based on the numbers that we've had, but we think we're going to have income of bid tax of about $450,000 in the next, in October, November, December. Administration's going to run us about $224,000. And then we get into the sales development, advertising, conventions, excuse me, advertising for conventions, meetings, and events, and I want to pull that for you, I can give you a little detail here. Digital strategy, $160,000. Now, this is really key to what we do. Our fourth quarter includes a strong push for the shoulder leisure travel market, because of course, this is more of our off-season. Okay, so we're going to have to really push to get those people to continue to come in here to fill the hotels. Also included in this 160, visitor guide, planning guide, search, evergreen efforts, make up all of this line item as well, and aligning our strategy with various conventions, meetings, sports, and group tour sales planning. Without digital strategy, you know, we're lost, because that's, that is the way of the day. So we have to do quite a large investment in that area. Moving down to event ads underneath that, we've got a couple of local events that we know are coming up. We don't know for sure they're going to ask us to do ads, but we think they probably will. Trade publications, we've got three ads in the next three months for $17,345. Moving down to sales development bidding, crow is something I want to point out quickly to you. A crow is a community outreach, and six of our team go out and call on two business people every week. So we're making 12 sales calls, PR calls, in the community each week in order to get the word out, to substantiate the industry, let them know what we're doing, and try to engage them in, hey, what do you belong to? Let us do the work and we'll go after it, but what, what groups do you belong to? Moving on down to pre-promo requirements, we don't know what they might be, but something might pop up in the next three months where we have to invest. Site visit, when planners come into Sioux Falls and look us over, and we wine and dine them and show them everything great about Sioux Falls, when that happens, we pay. So that's what that dollar amount is in there for. Bidding investments, that money that we have to say, yes, we'll commit to you in order to get them here. The ones that we know for sure right now have been promised are the ones listed, the four listed. We also have $10,000 in there in case something pops up. It's not unheard of anymore to be asked for $100,000. So $10,000 is like a penny, but we think that will get us through the next three months. Bid trips, 2,500 in case, in case something comes up. We have two travel, trade shows, excuse me, for the next three months, Connect DC and Connect Faith, where we, where we will go and focus on those markets. And that brings us down total sales development to $225,981. And that total for the next three months, we are hoping for a break-even budget of the $450,000. Okay, moving on, quickly, I'm getting, I'm getting the eye from the chairman, I'm hurrying. Okay, now, the next, the next budget is January through December. All right, we are, we are calculating income on the bid of a little over $2 million. Fingers crossed everything keeps moving forward for the next year. Total administrative, which is 66% of all of our administration costs, and all of those things are like accounting, legal, insurance, retirement, salaries, taxes, et cetera. $911,000. Sales development, advertising, okay, there's the big number of the day, $619,000 in digital, digital strategy. We have to do it. If we don't up our game, we're going to fall, we're going to fall back. This is for a whole year, 12-month investment, the shoulder season efforts, we have to stay on that. A new quarterly source campaign, and travel articles, and event promotion, we have to build TikTok, whether we like it or not, we got to do it. We've got to continue with public relations, miscellaneous, public relations entities to get the word out. Our peak leisure campaign efforts, strategy reporting, we've got to be able to report, we've got to push harder on being able to account for everything that we're doing and be able to track that and report that to you, to the hotels, to our boards. This investment will bring us back to where we would have been if we wouldn't have had COVID. So it's critical that we get going, we've got to push us to another level. We're not satisfied here, we got to get Sioux Falls back up where it should have been had we not had COVID. Okay, sports publications for the 12,000, four publications, six publications for trade at 136,000. Miscellaneous new opportunities, 80,000, where we're going to target Chicago, Minneapolis, Omaha, all to complement the digital side, so more sales advertising. Moving down to sales development bid, you've got the crows again, pre-promo, don't tell anybody, but we're going to pre-promote Pheasant Fest again, but don't tell anybody that it's coming back to Sioux Falls, because it's not for public record. Joe. Okay. So that's coming up in February, and that's a big investment. 65,000 we put in for bidding investments this next year. I need to tell you, we are running into bidding that's changed even more since pre-COVID. Man, they want, we had one group, I think it was 195 free sleeping rooms as part of the bid commitment, and they're getting it in other towns. Plus, they want cash, plus they want you to pay for a reception. It's crazy, but they know they're getting it because economically, they might be worth, a group might be worth $2 or $3 million in economic impact. So what's 100 grand or, or 150 grand if you invest that? So we upped ours to 65,000, and we're going to do the best we can with that 65. The university research administrators, we've committed two grand to the airshow and the Special Olympics, bringing bidding to 129, 150. Travel, we've got Pheasant Fest plus a couple other bid trips. Sales blitzes, we're heading back to DC to Blitz DC again, always been a major market, great place for us to sell. Nine trade shows and travel shows at 107,000. And that brings us all down to $2,030,000, and again, we're, we're going to shoot for a break-even budget. That's really fast. I have all the detail, if you want to see it, I have pages and pages of detail to show every penny, if you'd like to see it, but those are the summaries. So with that, where are we today? We're coming back as fast as we can, I'm talking as fast as I can. Coming back as fast as we can. Sports is expanding, you know, horseshoes, soccer, softball, trappers, hunters, there's all kinds of markets out there that we're expanding in sports. Leisure market, we're doing a great job beating the pavement on leisure. Bus tour groups are really growing thanks to some hardcore sales efforts. Trade and travel shows get back in the face of people. So, you know, we're, we're just really, really trying to up the game. We are not satisfied, we want to do more for Sioux Falls. We want Sioux Falls to be even more of a destination. So while things are really better, this summer's numbers better, as I said, we're going to push harder. The benefit of what we do, you know, we get, we get requests from the medical community, retailers, restaurants, it's not just hotels by any means, the corporate community who want our videos, they want our materials, because they're constantly selling to all of their different markets. So we affect the community all the way through, from the bottom to the top, and both sides in every direction. So we want to get spicy. We want to get, we want to get more aggressive. The competition's increasing, nail sales and marketing, and we want to do the same, we want to beat them. And with this budget, we think we'll be on the road to doing that. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Counselors' questions. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Terry, for the presentation. Need a minute to get some oxygen, take a second. Congrats on the STR report, that's impressive, leading that, those realm of stats. My question is, on the digital strategy, like that 619 number, so you talked a little bit about some of the things that that involves, what's been the past budget for that particular strategy?
The digital strategy?
Yeah.
Got right here. 458,868 was in '21, '22. In 2021, it was 278,623.
Okay.
We're taking a jump.
Yeah, but needed. Gotcha. And then, I was, I think every year I ask you about that, because I was, it always amazes me, and you tell stories about what some cities do to get certain events and what they give away. So that 65,000 number you're talking about, that's a kind of a fund or budget part of that, that you're using for that type of thing? And any ideas what that could be, or you never know until the...
We never know.
Okay.
We never know, and to be really honest with you, we've had some, we've had some requests that we, I mean, I'm not kidding you when I say 190-some sleeping rooms, free. Plus, do a reception, plus do this, and we're just like, we, we're not big enough, we just, we can't do that. So those are the level of requests that are coming in, granted, there are some smaller too. And that 65,000, if we really want to fight the fight, I mean, really fight it, we'd be out there with, you know, 30, 40 grand every time, but we can't do that. So we focus on what's realistic, but yet growing, and go after that. The other thing that, to be honest with you, that we're up against that hurts us, airline rates into Sioux Falls are not helping us right now. Availability of our meeting, our largest meeting facility is tough, we need more space, and we need, frankly, you guys have heard me say this forever, we need more hotel rooms attached to the convention center. It's just all there is to it, and it causes us to lose business. So available dates, airlines, cost. And, and the other thing that's happening in the market is that many cities are giving away their convention center. So here's 40 grand to get you in here, we'll, we'll do all these things for you, but by gosh, they still want that convention center space at no cost. And, you know, we realize the convention center is a business, it has to, has to run like a business, but it's happening, and it's real, so we, we, we're up against that as well.
Right. Yeah, very competitive, but looks like you're on the right track and things are looking good, and I sure appreciate all that you always do in your team, so again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Other counselors. Counselor McCarron.
Thank you, Chairman. The city's undergoing kind of some conversation right now about the future of water, reclement, water recreation, stuff like that. Have you had any feedback regarding what Sioux Falls is really missing on that front in regards to more swimming tournaments or opportunities? Ever since we added the midco, has there been something else that's been like, hey, if you had this, you'd have opportunity for more?
We do have opportunity for more. We have good facilities, great facilities right now, but just like with everything else, the markets are growing. And if we want to continue to compete in that, we need more, we need bigger. And then don't forget that you might have the facility, but you got to have all the walkability around it to take care of those people so they aren't away from what they consider to be the action.
Other questions, counselors. Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you for your presentation. There was an award, and I think you can be brought into it as the best budget presentation that we've had so far. So great work, you were on time, and I appreciate that. Just like during COVID, we, you know, gave you a shot in the arm for advertising dollars when you needed it. I think that would be the sentiment of the council, I speak for myself only in this, but with your persuasive lobbying, I think if you had a big event that we could get, and we accomplished some of the tasks that you said, you know, more hotel rooms, potentially more, you know, conference rooms as we continue to grow, I wouldn't be hesitant to come in front of us and ask for that, and definitely call on Council Chair Sale to, to start those conversations. But we're here to support you, because like you said, you're, you're throughout the community, and I appreciate that as an individual, and, and thank you for your work. And I guess Pheasant Fest is going to be here, Joe and Trevor, if you guys wanted to talk about that?
I never heard that. Thanks, Alex.
Other questions? I'll just follow up, you mentioned the airlines as an issue, is it the availability of flights or is it the cost of the flights coming to Sioux Falls?
Cost.
Cost? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, you did a great job.
Thank you all very much.
Feel free to stay through the rest of presentations or go back and line something else this afternoon, that'd be great.
Thank you all.
We'll move on to Southeast Technical College update.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Bob Gregson, the president at Southeast Tech, and want to say thank you for the opportunity to visit with you for a few minutes here this afternoon about some of our accomplishments this past year and some of the new initiatives we're looking at for the coming year. As you may be aware, our mission at Southeast Tech is, is pretty much central and focused on workforce, meeting the workforce needs of the region and the success of our students. Last year, our fall enrollment was 2,381 students. Some good news, this past Friday was the 10th day of classes, and that's the official enrollment date for all two- and four-year colleges across the country. And so the good news for us is we have 2,430 students this fall, so that's an increase of 2% over last fall, and I think we were up about 3% in credits over last fall as well. 30, 40% of our students are non-traditional, 52% of our students are full-time, so we have a very, very large number of part-time students that are working, raising families, and taking classes as well. 98% of our graduates last year were placed. So over the last five years, we've had between 97% to 99% placement. So I think that speaks to the quality of our programs and the quality of our graduates as well. A couple of recent awards and recognitions you can see on the slide there that we're very proud of. Niche.com, we were ranked 11th in the country last year out of all two-year colleges. What's interesting, this past Friday, we just got notice from them, so for 2023, they looked at 906 two-year colleges, and we are, for 2023, we're ranked number one in the state of South Dakota and number seven nationally. So that's something, again, I think that's impressive for the institution. Aspen dot, or Aspen, the institute, is also a national type of award, and for 2023, we were recognized there again, being the top 10% of two-year colleges. A big initiative that this past year was working on our strategic plan going forward, and I just wanted to outline and highlight a couple of, of those for you because of the critical importance, and it really is the direction that we're going to focus on this next year, and actually for the next three years at Southeast Tech. So ensuring academic excellence, continuing that focus on programmatic accreditation, and Dr. Benjamin Valdez, our VP of Academics, is here with me this afternoon, and he's going to talk with you a little bit about some of the professional accreditations we have there, increasing access and opportunity. When we did some surveying, we did quite a bit of work, focus groups, surveying, strategic planning meetings with community members, the number one issue that came up for Southeast Tech was access and opportunity, increasing access and opportunity for first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented students, so we really wanted to focus that, and it's highlighted in our plan. Improving campus culture, growing partnerships and collaborations, and I've been at Southeast for six years now, and I'm really proud of the fact that I think what we have done in terms of collaboration and partnerships, we've started 10 new academic programs within the last three years, all of those have been in consultation with local business and industry. So that's an important connection as far as a higher education institution, we can't do it alone, we need to partner, and with our workforce mission, partner with business and industry as well. Enhancing our marketing and awareness, still, a lot of, a lot of community residents, a lot of residents across the state still don't know who we are, so we're working on improving that, and advancing student support and the success of our students. We are attracting now more first-generation, low-income, underrepresented students. Once they come to us, though, we've got to make sure we're doing a good job in terms of providing support for them. So those are some of the strategic priorities, and I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Benjamin Valdez, and he can run over some additional information. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council Chair, members of the council, again, my name is Benjamin Valdez, and I'm the vice president of academic affair for Southeast Tech. Wanted to provide you some information regarding the programs that we have at Southeast Tech. First, you see problematic accreditation. Problematic accreditation for us is extremely important. Many of our programs require problematic accreditation for them to become licensed within their field. Good example, our nursing program, if they were not licensed by ASIN accreditation body, they would not be able to move forward for licensure. So problematic accreditation is really important, and it's a very long and arduous process to gather all the documents, to provide documentation of the accredited body, host an accreditation visit, and ensure that we are in line with national standards, as well as ensuring that we're also still meeting the needs of the local workforce. One that I would really like to point out is the Accreditation Council for Business School Programs, ACBSP. Our business program for our accounting, marketing, finance, and business administration program is now an accredited program. We are the first technical college to achieve that accreditation. It is the accreditation that Dakota State and Northern State and Black Hills State hold for their business programs. For us, achieving that accreditation provides us to really sit down at the table with our four-year partners and provide 100% transferability of our programs into theirs, because we have met that high level of accreditation standard. Along the terms of accreditation and our providing articulations is working with the state university systems and the Board of Regents. Two of the big ones, we just recently had a signing with South Dakota State University, we provided a new program within our nursing and an opportunity for graduates from Southeast Tech to continue on, all credits they've earned at Southeast Tech. In fact, if a student really plans this out correctly, they can actually take up to 60. seventy-two credits from Southeast Tech to South Dakota State University's nursing program. But what was really unique about this partnership is that students at SDSU who maybe haven't found the fit, they, it isn't the right time for them, the four-year being away from school, finance, whatever that situation be, they have the opportunity to reverse and come to Southeast Tech. We're accepting their credits, they're completing their nursing program with us and then they're back on that pathway, back to SDSU when it fits them. We're doing the same thing with Northern. We're, with Northern, we're working right now to finalize a program that'll even take it a step further where we're looking to have dual enrollment. So, a student will come to Southeast Tech, enroll in our accounting, business administration program, marketing program, and they'll have also dual enrollment at Northern. When they graduate with their associate's degree, everything transfers and they finish their baccalaureate program at Northern online. So, we're really trying to get innovative in how we deliver education and meet student needs. Partnerships within South Dakota is also very important and we really worked hard to really develop some partnerships with agencies throughout the state that really help promote education in South Dakota. Couple of them I'd like to point out first is the Department of Corrections and Department of Labor Partnership that we have formed. We've actually, through a partnership, the three of us have come together and we've enrolled fifteen low-risk inmates who are pending release. Most of them are actually out in the community, are on work release already. What we're doing is we're providing them an opportunity to earn a welding diploma. So, they're coming in the afternoons and they're going through the welding program. They'll actually earn their certificate from us at the end of December. All costs are being covered through a grant that the Department of Corrections, Department of Labor have, including books and supplies. The students will then next year have the ability when they're upon their release to come back and actually enroll in the diploma and finish the second semester and actually earn then a second level of credential to really help them within industry. What's really great about this program is the, we've already spoken with several industry partners and several industry partners have said, we want to hire all of them upon, upon completion of the program. So, it's really helping provide that pipeline for workforce development and meeting the needs of industry as, as they're struggling to fulfill their ranks within the workforce. The other one is the Board of Regents. Right now, we're working very close as a technical college system to align curriculum. Unfortunately, in the past, the technical colleges, the four of us have somewhat been siloed. We're now coming together and we're now aligning our curriculum. We're also doing that in conjunction with the Board of Regents. Right now, the first program we're doing that with is our nursing program. So, our goal is that all of us will have the same naming, nomenclature, same course description, same learning objectives that that student really helps fine-tune their education. We provide more opportunities. And again, that's working together in partnership between all the technical colleges and the Board of Regents institutions. As you can see here, we've added, just within the last year, seven new academic programs. It has been a very heavy load to carry. Most recently, the starting just a few weeks ago, the AAS and Human Resource Management Mechanical System Hall. It's somewhat new, it's really not. It's actually taking the diploma of our welding, I'm sorry, our plumbing program and HVAC program and a student who completes both and completes the additional general education programs or courses can then earn associate's degree in mechanical systems. Industry really pushed us for that because they said a lot of times, especially in today's market, especially in rural areas, they can't send out two individuals to a job site, to into someone's home. Can we have them, we can send one person that understands the plumbing and HVAC site? So, we've developed an opportunity. We've also worked very closely with Avera and Sanford. We've developed an allied health certificate and community health worker certificate and also we'll be launching next year two additional healthcare programs when we finish the build-out of the Healthcare Simulation Center, but our Behavioral and Mental Health Technician Program and our Laboratory Technician Program. So, it's really working, trying to understand what industry wants, the trends within the job market and really trying to develop those programs. Most of these programs, human resources, behavioral, mental health, laboratory technician, all will require problematic accreditation on top of that. So, it's a multi-level approach for that. It was when we tried to design the program and we try to figure out the courses that we're going to offer and then the enrollment strategy for those programs. And at this point, I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Stephen Williams for Foundation for an update on the financial side.
My name is Steve Williamson. I'm Director of the Foundation. Hello, Council Chair and City Council. My job is primarily to work as an intermediary between what you provide to Southeast Tech and then that's provided to the college. In general, since this discussion agreement has occurred, we have concentrated in certain areas. We want to support workforce initiatives. We want to promote innovation and collaboration. We want to improve access to higher education for all students, especially those that are first generation. When we talk about first generation, there's a lot of people that have different, these are the first in their family to go to college when we're talking about first-generation students. And then last but not least, use to leverage private state and federal dollars. So, recently, these are the things that we have spent, the dollars that we've gotten, received from the city. I will say this, none of these things happen without the dollars from the city, none of them. These are things that we wanted to do, we needed to do, but honestly, we did not have a funding source to really be able to do them. So, thank you so much for doing some things that are major changes at Southeast Tech. The Office of Access and Workforce Opportunity. The sole purpose of that office now and that person is to increase and improve the matriculation, retention and graduation of first-generation, underrepresented students. We did not have a person or an office dedicated to that before this, our agreement with the city of Sioux Falls. We were able to purchase two new automatic semi-tractors for CDL training. So, initially, we had a manual and as we all know, not a lot of people drive manuals anymore, so we were having a hard time retaining students who were in the CDL program and industry was going to automatic transmission. So, we traded in the manual transmission and bought a new automatic, I shouldn't say new, it was used, but automatic. And then we added a second after we, after the changes with federal regulations and the requirement for CDL training now that are, so our, the numbers have gone up quite a lot there. The mobile lab for construction management was necessary, especially with our relationship with Habitat for Humanity where our construction management students are out building a home, which we just completed this year. Books for early, the early childhood program, leverage private dollars for the greenhouse repairs. So, as we all know, we always, we try to keep some city dollars in reserve each year for something like this. There's always an opportunity that comes up to leverage federal, state or private dollars. Well, that came up this year with our greenhouse that was barraged with some hail this summer and needed, needs a new roof. So, we were able to use city dollars to run a campaign and we tripled the dollars that we're able, that we need to meet the deductible on the insurance claim and now we're able to build, put it on a new roof for our greenhouse, which is now supports our horticulture program, which is a brand-new Build Dakota program, which means that there's exceptional need there. So, we'll be able to get to that right away and that, that the money we dedicated from the city will tripled, doubled, became sixty thousand. So, that was very helpful. We're able, we're going to renovate the welding laboratory space, which desperately needs it. Also, what we're calling the Strategic Initiatives Fund. One of the things we always want to drive is innovation, especially at Southeast Tech. Sometimes innovation is not necessarily a word that we find in higher education. That is not the case at Southeast Tech. We are always looking at innovation. We are always looking at our, how we communicate and collaborate. So, one of the, one of the things we started this year was we started a new fund to drive faculty and employees to come up with an innovative idea to drive something new. So, we are able to provide small grants for them to go and do something at Southeast Tech, whether it's better themselves or whether it's to do something at Southeast Tech that right now there isn't funding for. And last but not least is the Police Cadet Program. Working with the Sioux Falls Police Department, we will now start mentoring first-generation, underrepresented students who are coming through our police program and they will have a mentor at the Sioux Falls Police Department. So, those are all the things that we're doing at Southeast Tech. We deeply appreciate everything that you have done for us. You have made changes. I'll give you one really good one too. We were able to offer a hundred thousand dollars more in scholarships to first-generation students this year because we didn't have to use monies somewhere else on campus. We offered more scholarships here than we ever have at Southeast Tech strictly because we have monies available from donors to go and provide that. And that, I think we're going to start seeing that in our numbers and our retention rates. Are there any questions?
Counselors, questions? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Can you go back to your last slide? I don't, I don't know if that thing is easy to work. Your Police Cadet Program, how many people are in that program today? Do you know? And then a follow-up before you even answer it, is that a part of the Build Dakota Scholarship as well?
So, the law, our law enforcement program is now, as of next year, will be part of the Build Dakota. So, we'll be able to accept students into that next year and they'll be able to start next fall as a Build Dakota student. The Police Cadet Program is new this fall to us, so we have just a minimal number of students in it right now. We're working with the Sioux Falls Police Department to help recruit and provide that mentoring and that ability for those high school students and younger students to have that contact and interaction and get to work and understand what the career field's about.
Do you have a breakdown of what that program, and, and you can do this offline, but what that program costs for you guys and then kind of what you're planning to see the ramp up? As you know, you know, it's always mission critical for us from a public safety perspective to make this a priority. And now that I know that you guys have it, it's outstanding and want to just make sure that we're providing the necessary tools for you guys.
I will follow up and make sure you get that information, Counsel President.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Soberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great presentation. Always impressive seeing everything that you guys are doing and every year, there's a lot of new things that you get going. Like you said, you guys have done a great job on the collaboration and partnerships. I think that's really exciting that, that credit transfers now you can do between SDSU and Northern and those type things. Those new academic programs. What's a behavioral, mental health technician?
The behavioral and mental health technician is really to be that frontline worker working in a facility like Avera's new behavioral, mental health facility. In addition, they have additional training that they can provide, some basic lead, lead groups and provide some basic assistance. And within the rural areas of our South Dakota, we're hearing a lot from the communities that they need somebody that can help individuals maneuver through resources and find resources, plus also get some basic information for their families as well. So, it really kind of gets them started on a track into either a degree in social work or a degree in psychology so they can advance their skills, but it's that entry-level position that they need so desperately right now within so many of the facilities to help lead groups, provide assistance and support to the nurses and other mental health practitioners.
Interesting. That's an impressive title, that's for sure. How many total students at STI now? Maybe you touched on that?
Sorry, two thousand four hundred and thirty students this fall.
How many is that up from, from the year before?
It was two thousand three hundred and eighty-one last fall. So, it's a 2% increase in our head count. The pandemic has been very, very hard on higher education institutions, especially two-year institutions. I think in South Dakota, we've been kind of the exception to the rule. Nationally, the National Student Clearinghouse, just to give you an idea, in 2020, two-year institutions declined in enrollment. This is an average, but it's eleven to twelve percent nationally. So, we were flat, I think in 2020, a little bit down last year, so we're, we're glad to see, you know, students coming back and expanding. As Dr. Valdez mentioned, the program offerings hopefully again to meet industry need.
Which, final question, which field of study or program has the most students in it?
Our largest program, our healthcare programs combined are our largest programs. So, we have LPN, RN, SURG Tech, sonography program. So, healthcare overall, if you're just looking at an individual program, I think business administration has still pretty strong numbers. As far as demand, what's interesting is our electrician program, we take in sixty students and we have on average now about forty to fifty students on a, on a waitlist. So, we'll have thirty students new and then students continuing on into a second year as well. But that's a program that we've mentioned and that's where business and industry and partnerships and really thinking outside the box, being able to collaborate like we have done with Stanford and our paramedic program. We do not have paramedic facilities. We're partnering with Sanford. Our vet tech program, we do not have large animal facilities. We're partnering with McCrossan's. You know, those kinds of opportunities I think are, are out there and we'll continue to, to work hard to do that. One note I wanted to just mention because the question was asked about Build Dakota, very proud of the fact that in, in 2016, when I started, we had twenty-one industry-sponsored scholarships for Build Dakota. This year, out of a hundred and thirty-eight total scholarships that were awarded this fall, a hundred and eight were industry-sponsored. So, that is an industry partner picking up fifty percent of that student's tuition bill and then in return, that student agrees to work for that industry partner for three years. It's been an extremely impressive program. Every year, we attract more and more industry partners, so we love that to continue and we'll look forward to law enforcement being added to that list now.
Very impressive. Well, thank you.
Counselor Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. You touched on it briefly with the Police Cadet Program, but are there any programs, you know, going to high school students and encouraging them to go into these programs like welding, plumbing, HVAC? It's a huge need in the construction industry as you know right now and it just seems like everything's sold because they can't find people to do the work. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, one of the components that we're really pushing for right now is dual and concurrent enrollment. We are in the process right now of finalizing our applications for CTE Academy and Harrisburg High School, that they will become additional locations for Southeast Tech. What that means is technically a student could complete their whole degree there at that high school because it is a site of Southeast Tech. Don't know if they'll ever get that just because of the way it, education is structured in South Dakota right now, but we're hopefully planning that we can get to that point. Right now, we are offering our construction certificates at Harrisburg High School and at CTE Academy, Dell Rapids High, or we're working with them and also Brandon Valley High School. Had a brain numb there. Brandon Valley High School to provide opportunities there as well. So, we're really trying to really get into the high school, get students to work on it as soon as possible. We're working with the Sioux Falls School District to try and embed things like our LPN and medical assisting program in the high school so that those students could come close to being done upon graduation.
And I just have one more question, just for my own curiosity. There's a lot of conversations taking place about student loans and student loan repayment. I'm just wondering, what is the average amount of debt that students come out with? How long does it take them to pay it back on average? Do you have any of those statistics at all? If not, that's okay.
I don't know if I, I have an average. I, I think the, the good news there is that our tuition was held by the State Tech Board this past year and we're hoping to do that again. So, the tuition increases have been rather modest over the last four or five years. It really depends on the program. If it's a certificate program, that's typically four or five classes. A diploma will be thirty credits or more and then a two-year AAS could be sixty to sixty-four. So, you'll have an eight thousand dollar, eight to ten thousand dollar investment for a diploma, you know, sixteen to eighteen thousand dollar for a two-year associate's program as well. So, it's still, it's still expensive and that's why these scholarships are so critical and I think we are, are working hard and something we didn't touch on here, but competency-based education. Dr. Valdez is leading a team and actually Southeast was selected as the, the state pilot partner with the state of South Dakota on this initiative. So, it's to recognize individuals, non-traditional students that are bringing in work experience and, and then allowing them to move more quickly through an educational program to reduce that cost overall. So, we're very excited about that. That's a heavy lift across the campus for financial aid and other offices, but we're excited to be piloting that program and hopefully next year, we'll be able to update you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, counselors? Counselor McCarras?
Thank you. One quick question. What's the scholarship gap for first-generation students? You mentioned a hundred thousand dollars you're able to allocate and the dream world, if you could scholarship, what do you need to make that happen?
I don't have an answer, to tell you the truth. The biggest thing is once, once a student gets done with Pell Grant, which Pell Grant usually which Pell Grant usually goes to persons who are in the bottom 20, 25% economically. I think the maximum Pell is six, give or take 6,000. Then after that, I will say this, we have a, with Build Dakota and all those, and the price of our tuition, we have a very good competitive price for what students get, what they're able to do. If we could do more, yeah, we, a million, two million? I mean, but the thing is, you always want to make sure that people have some kind of stake in the game. There's been some studies out there where they've done strictly full tuition, and the retention rate doesn't work as well. With certain states that have gone, I think it was Tennessee, that went and offered full tuition to everybody who wanted to go to a community college, and they found their retention rates really fell off. So we always want to make sure that there's some kind of, that they have some kind of stake in the game.
Thank you.
Great question.
Other questions, counselors? Seeing none, I will tell you that years ago, when I took an adult education welding class, it was one of the, it was great and informational, and it was a great job. So I'm glad to see you're renovating your welding laboratory space.
Am I hearing you might be a possible future instructor then? Is that what?
I did not obtain that level of competency.
Could we see his report card when you get a chance?
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Move on to our last presentation, and hopefully the best presentation because you're all being judged, you know? East Ridge District and Accessible Housing TIF District Request. Dustin.
Good afternoon, Council. Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. Today, I'm here to share with you a request for tax increment financing to support an accessible housing project in Sioux Falls. Kelly Nielsen with Nielsen Developments is the developer that has worked with city staff on creating this concept of the East Ridge District and is here today. I'll ask Kelly to come up in a few moments and talk a little bit about the project. But first, I did want to highlight some of the elements of the project and how we got here today. If you recall, the 2026 Housing Action Plan was established by our Sioux Falls Accessible Housing Advisory Board, which really laid out kind of the necessary steps to combat the needs of accessible housing in Sioux Falls. One of the actions in that Sioux Falls Housing Action Plan was to establish TIF guidelines to support the development of more accessible housing units in the city limits. So for the purposes of TIF and for this discussion today, how we're defining accessible housing is really housing options sold at a varied price between 60% and 100% of the first-time homebuyer pricing. So that maximum price that's established by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority currently is $340,000. And so we are targeting homes priced at 60% of that to 100%. So anywhere from 204,000 to the $340,000. Really, the principles around the guidelines that were established were to target various price points within a district while working within the housing market, but also making sure that the housing units that are being developed are integrated within the neighborhood and the adjacent property being developed. And we believe that this project does a good job of that. The guidelines that are shown on the screen is that the TIF proceeds, we're really limited by state law and what we can use. We can't build residential structures with tax increment financing because of state law. So really, the improvements that we can invest in through tax increment financing is the infrastructure, the grading, some of that site work that's needed, you know, those professional services to design the development. But ultimately, the residential structures themselves, we can't pay for. So that does restrict our ability and how we can use it. The requirements that the Ahab Board placed, though, was that the developer must commit to developing all of those units within the first five years. So really, another goal of this is to get those housing units on as soon as we possibly can. So developing all of the lots that are on this development within five years and then restricting the price points. And so what we talked about with Ahab is that having a varied amount of pricing, right? So their goals are what are on the screen, and it was units, have a minimum number of units targeted at 75% of that first-time homebuyer price, minimum number of units at 100%. And then still allowing for a little bit of marketability and having those homes above 100 or at 110% or below of the first-time homebuyer price. What we're sharing here today, though, with the project being brought forward by Nielsen Development is that we are, all of the homes are at or below first-time homebuyer price. So again, an important piece of this that is being brought forward is part of this. The other piece of this is we know that these are homes that are in lots that are going to be developed by Nielsen Development, but they're going to be sold to private property owners. And so one of the things is, how do we maintain a little bit of longevity to that affordable housing price? And so one of the things that'll be placed on these properties and the development is a buyer covenant, ultimately stating that the original home price that Kelly will be required to sell it for will be maintained for five years plus a housing price index. So if I were to buy one of these homes for the first five years, I could sell it during that five-year period, but I could only increase the price by the housing price index. And that's a couple of reasons for that is to keep that longevity of that original purchase price, but also to kind of promote longevity of people living in these units and targeting those people that want to, you know, move into this neighborhood and actually stay there for some time. So when we talk about the TIF request, what you'll see is this is a 20-plus million dollar development, developing 65 single-family homes. The TIF request is for $2.14 million, and that would go for all of that infrastructure improvement improvements to really prepare the site for the development of the homes. If we were to look at this area today, it's 9.7 acres. We're over on the northeast side of town by Madison Street and Veterans Parkway. It's currently ag land. This land generates about $250 in property taxes for those 10 acres. After the development of these homes, we'll be generating $300,000 in property taxes. That's the increment that'll help pay down the debt for the tax increment finance district. When we look at the site layouts, this is just one. I do have another slide that'll have the layout as well. What this just shows is there's a mix of different housing types. RT2 are going to be the twin homes that you'll see, and the RCD district is some of the single-family lots that have standalone homes on them, and we'll show those in the following slides. But you can see the road network that'll be in the district. North Tina Avenue is the road that is between the orange and the yellow going north and south. And then we have East Thimbleweed Street as well as East Hartgold Street. That'll be part of the development and layout of the site as well. So again, this is for 65 single-family homes. 39 of them will be single-family lots. Those are labeled unit type A and B on this slide, and we'll show each of those here in the next couple of slides. And then 13 twin-home lots. So there'll be 26 actual twin homes, but 13 twin-home lots that are on the west and south side of the development. It's important that all of these are below the first-time homebuyer pricing. When we look at South Dakota codified law and reviews TIF, if all of the units within a TIF district are low that first-time homebuyer price, we can consider it as an affordable housing TIF, which benefits the taxing jurisdictions as we move forward. So it is important that we're below that threshold for all of these lots. So when we look at the types of units, there's three types of units that are being proposed. Unit type A is a 978 square foot, single-family home, two bedrooms, one bath, one-stall garage. The goal for this property is to be priced at or below $232,000. And that's roughly about 68% of the first-time homebuyer price. Unit type B, again, will be in that core area of the single-family lots, 1,200 square feet. So a little bit larger, an extra bedroom, extra bath, three-bedroom, two-bath with this model. Again, priced to be at or below $308,000, which is about 90% of the first-time homebuyer pricing. And then the last unit is our twin-home units, which are two bedrooms, two bathrooms. Does have a two-stall garage, and this does have a lower level unfinished. So the previous two units are slab-on-grade units. This allows, does have unfinished basement, which could allow up to another two bedrooms, one bath in the basement. The goal is for these to be purchased and sold at or below $323,000. When we look at the, these are just, the next two slides are just a couple of example renderings. This should kind of show kind of what the housing concept would look like and how it laid us out on the lot. Again, on the left and the bottom, you can see along North Tina Avenue, the twin homes. And then in the core, you can see the different mix of single-family homes. Again, those are, you know, a part of that RCD district. It's important that we get that type of zoning. We will have a rezoning request that comes forward as part of this as well because it allows the lots to be smaller, setbacks to be a little bit different, and we get to create a little bit of density in the neighborhood, which allows us to bring down the cost of the development as well. This rendering is more of a 3D look, just again, looking at the neighborhood. You can see the twin homes at the very top and in the back, looking towards the west. And you can see, again, the single-family homes with the one-stall garage, but having a wider driveway to allow two-stall parking on those. So kind of the next steps, this is really a high-level presentation of where we're at. We do have Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. So we'll be presenting the project boundaries, which is that 9.7 acres. And then the project plan, which kind of details what was shared with you here today. They'll be making a recommendation to city council on those two items. Ultimately, we'll be going to the county commission to brief them on September 20th with a goal to be back to city council later this month and early October for a development agreement to be brought in front of you along with the boundaries and the project plan. So I will ask Kelly to come up. He'll just kind of share some quick thoughts of the project and how we've got to where we are today, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Welcome.
Kelly Nielsen, thanks for entertaining this idea. I've worked on and off with quite a few different housing committees over the last eight or 10 years, and I would just sit in the meetings wanting to try to figure out something. And with COVID being a little slower time, my staff kind of started designing the least expensive house we could come up with, which were the slab-on-grades that we were talking about. We actually entertained trying to do a pole barn, even cut down on more cost to help get individuals into affordable housing. That kind of evolved. COVID passed. I started meeting with staff on the projects. We did purchase 95 acres of this, where this parcel's at. We have it integrated with homes, you know, within reason that are from, this being the lower side of it, up to some of them, homes will be in that $600,000 within that same 95-acre parcel. As I was in the meetings, we had, just wanting to keep that integration, right? We didn't want to put this price point houses here and everybody else living over there. Were big things that we talked over over the past few years. So this is a concept we came up with, worked with city staff on tweaking some of the size of the lots, some of the roads to be within standards of the city, but yet trying to increase that density to reduce the cost. Here's the project that we had that we're in front of you that we're asking.
Questions, Counselor? Counselor Nitzer.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for taking the risk. You know, it's good to see that we're trying something different. I don't know if you know offhand, but I'm very curious because I'm not sure. I mean, staff could answer if we've ever done a rezoning to a residential cluster development. I mean, that's new and shaped places. So just maybe noodle that over. But I was just looking at what it allows. You can get pretty dense. So do you know generally what your front and rear yard setbacks and what your side yards are going to be? Because usually, it'd have to be 25 in the front, 25 in the back, and five on both sides generally, but.
Correct. We had to stay with five in the sides. That was non-negotiable. I think we're left in the, I think we could go down to 10 in the back, if I remember right.
It looks like 10 feet average on the front and the back, although the garages, I think, have to be back 20 feet.
Yeah, the fronts are a little deeper because they wanted to make sure we could park a car, if you even just look at the rendering that you're looking at. We kept the fronts closer to that. I think they're at 20. But we, some of the lots, just with the boundaries of the way the development laid out, we're not at 10 in the back. I think we probably averaged 15 or better on most of the backs. But we were able to go as low as 10. I don't think we hit that, though, if I remember right.
Okay. It's great to see just more density. And I'm just, you know, it's hard, I think, you know, to take risks when money's on the line. So I'm glad to see that we're, that, again, thank you for doing that. So there is a discussion that came up, and I can't take credit for the idea, but there's a question about basements, about how much does that add to the cost? And, you know, in doing it, it would give somebody maybe like the sweat equity, like they could build equity down the road? Now, I live in a slab-on-grade, and I'm totally fine with it, so I'm not knocking slab-on-grade. But, you know, what would that add to do like just an unfinished basement to the cost of your homes?
So, great question, and we have debated this ever since slabs started being more of a common practice in South Dakota. In my opinion, when you actually break it down, you're probably only saving somewhere between 15 and 20% of gross. So if it's a $200,000 house, you're saving roughly 30 grand by going to a slab versus that. But you lose all the square footage, so it's quite an offset for that savings.
But can you, can you just not get it to pencil out to do that, to stay within these percentages you have to stay within? Is that what the difficulty is?
So that's the easy part. Trying to squeeze the staircase inside of that square footage upstairs is the challenge. Because now you grow the house to get the staircase in, and it's, you start having all these offsets when you're really focused on trying to keep your price point down.
Okay. I'll defer and ask a few more later.
Other questions? Counselor Jensen.
To piggyback on Counselor Nitzer's questioning, one of the other topics in that conversation was garages. And like in the olden days, you know, when my grandma and grandpa came to town, they bought their Sears house, and then they built their garage later. And I understand that the square feet of the lot is going to be troublesome to maybe do that. But, and I know the market might not adopt that as a house. Have you ever thought about that from a strategic point of view, especially when we're talking about a TIF project of sorts?
We did, even before we played with this particular layout. It's still about the lot width, right? So even if you don't put the garage on it, typically back in the day, the Sears house, like the garage is behind and kind of tucked behind. Well, you still got to keep that driveway at least. We played with it down to 10, but that gets to be too tight. So you're 12 feet, while the garages we put on here are only 15 feet. So it's like, and I still got to pay for all the concrete to get back there. So in our opinion, it wasn't worth the loss of value on just having a single-family home without the garage.
Great answer. Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Bronco.
Well, I saw your, thank you for doing this. I saw you set those goals, which I know you're trying to do the most affordable houses that you can to try to help people, working families, first-time buyers, you know, get a good home. But those, I mean, those prices are still a little bit high for a lot of people in that community. How realistic or how comfortable are you that we can hit that goal? Or how concerned are you? Maybe I should ask that with the various supply chain and inflationary factors that we're going to go over that goal?
So I have concerns because the commitment is, we could come back for an ass later if we had to, but the commitment on mine and my team's side is to get these done and hold that price, not for just 2023, but we're committing to holding that till 2024, '25, tweaking it to '26. So that's where my risk is at, is like, you know, I mean, could I do it today in '22 and maybe even do all right? Probably, but my infrastructure costs went up 20% in my developing, and I haven't even got the sewer and water into this yet, let alone, you know. And if that goes up 20% by next year, that's just the start of this. And I'm like, so, great question. And I look at it, and I'm like, well, we should be okay right now, but I'm more concerned about the next two to three years. And we're trying to balance that price by not ever wanting to come back. And part of the goal, when you kind of open the door a little bit there, was the vision of this isn't for just Nielsen Development. When I started working with staff, I was wanting to set this up where I can get more developer builders involved, right? I mean, I'm hoping this concept works with not only you, but everybody on board with planning in the whole city so that you see these larger developers, without dropping names, doing the same concept in some of theirs. And it makes sense for all parties, not just the developers, for the homeowner, the city, everybody involved. I mean, that's really the ultimate goal of it.
Thank you.
Counselor McCarras.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I really appreciate the comments that you just gave about developing a plan that we get others to take ownership of as well. So that's really appreciated. My question's for staff. My, my question's for staff. Dustin, just so the public's well aware, and we're well aware of this as well, have you done any projections on what the estimated annual property taxes would be if we let this, if we did not do this TIF and went to market with this, what, basically what the property taxes would be in that scenario?
So if, if Kelly were to build market rate homes?
Yep.
Well, based off, yeah, that, that's a little hard to say, because I haven't, you know, we're doing smaller lots, getting as many homes here. If you were to do the typical market rate that he's doing in the rest of the neighborhood, they're a little bit bigger lots, so less homes, but at higher value. So it's probably going to equate to, to similar of what, what we're projecting here in terms of, if you were to, you know, you make a little bit larger lots, fewer homes, but higher value, right? So I, I can't do the math right now, but, and we can look at that if you, if you'd like us to dig a little bit further into that and, and see. But I would say that it would equate to something similar to what we're projecting here, which is, you know, roughly generating $300,000 in taxes for this nine acres of property.
Well, I would just, I appreciate you running some numbers on that, because I think it's just important for us to be able to say to the public, this is how we're, believe that using public assets is a great investment. And if we didn't invest public assets, here would be what we'd be having, et cetera, just so we can tell the full picture. But overall, it's a great opportunity for us.
Yep.
Other questions? Councillor? Councillor Starr?
Yep. Thank you. I'll, I'll go quick, councillor Neitz. I guess, Dustin, I'm more, who are we trying to help? I mean, really, who qualifies for a, a $300,000 house? I, you know, I was listening to an interview earlier today, and they were talking about nurses and police officers and firefighters not having the income to qualify for the housing they're looking for. Does this lower it enough to get? I mean, tell me the kind of income that it takes to, to get into one of these houses.
Well, I might look back here to get a little help from the housing team on that. What, what I would say generic, to, to maybe highlight your question, is that when we're, when we're talking about tax increment financing, you know, it's, and when we talked about how we can use TIF to support accessible housing in Sioux Falls, we're trying to target those home prices between that 60% and 100% of first time home buyer. And, and that's really because of how we can utilize TIF. There's only a limited amount of infrastructure costs, and there's only a limited amount of increment that's going to be generated from homes. Typically, when we bring TIFs forward for commercial projects, we're talking about large number of increment that is used to pay for millions of dollars worth of improvements. When we talk about single family home development, you know, every property's going to pay, you know, four to $5,000 in taxes a year. We're, we're only generating, you know, again, when this is completely finished, $300,000 a year. And when you take in the financing of those costs, as well as the overall infrastructure cost, it doesn't take us very far, right? And so we're only, this is a tool that we can use to probably target that range. You know, I, I think, you know, there's other tools that can target a lower range, you know, looking at tax credits, other programs that the city may be able to offer, or maybe combine programs to actually target a lower value or lower pricing point. But, you know, again, working with Kelly and, and understanding, you know, the type of development, the cost of development, the infrastructure, this tool's only going to get us so far, and I think we're targeting the right range. It's not, it's going to add housing stock to Sioux Falls at that, that pocket. And so that's ultimately the goal that our housing board came up with, as well as working with Kelly and, and kind of trying to target that range. But I'll, I'll let them talk.
Let me stick with TIFs for just the, the TIF part of it. So why do we need to finance this? We're talking about a $2 million TIF. Couldn't we just write the check, put it in the budget, and be done? I mean, why go through all the strings that come along with TIF? You know, taking the money from the, the county. I mean, they're the, really, the only ones in TIF that kind of get put to the back on this. Schools are held harmless in the, the big picture of things. I mean, for a $2 million test project that we're doing, why don't we just write the check and make the rules ourselves?
It could be an option, if that's what the, the council wanted to consider. What I would say is, is how that lines with budgeting and doing supplements moving forward. This policy allows us to have these projects come to us when they're ready and be able to plan for the future. You know, when we, when we started talking with Kelly, you know, this is, you know, if, if this doesn't get approved this fall, his whole project changes for 2023, right? And so understanding the timing of these developments coming online, providing this tool as an opportunity for those to come to us during their timeframe and be able to then bring it to council for consideration. Again, we, we could always budget more dollars towards housing to support grant programs or something, but this is a tool that we can use that doesn't impact the overall budget of the city on an annual basis.
We have a couple of staff jumping up and down back here wanting to answer your question. So come on up, you guys. Add some color to what Dustin just said.
So that's a really good question. When they have boards started looking at how to address housing, and one of the things that we kept hearing over and over, and one of the things that I was very committed to is that whatever we did would be a market-based solution, right? There's, there's two ways, right? You can try to do it using the, leveraging the market and letting the free enterprise system drive the, drive this and drive it in perpetuity, right? Because you're, or you could throw money at it. You can just throw cash at it, and you got to keep throwing cash at it. You can keep throwing cash at it, and when you're out of cash, then you're out of program. And so the idea was to build a sustainable model that could be driven by the development community and their participation with it, and this was a tool that, that we arrived on. So that's, that's why we chose this. You know, you make a point as a pilot, maybe we could have thrown just cash at it, but we really wanted to make sure the mechanics of the TIF worked and worked for the development community so that it could be replicated.
Not to be argumentative, but, I mean, we're throwing debt at it rather than cash. I mean, that's the alternative, is that we're financing and paying interest when we have money in our savings account that we, we could do that, and I think that's a debate we can have. So, thank you, Director. I appreciate the, that part of it. Whoops, I'm not done. That's okay. One of the other things that, when we build neighborhoods and, and as we're in a huge growth thing, do we have forecasts for the number of students, elementary through junior high, that, that makes the impact? What do we tell the, the Brandon Valley School District? How many new families are going to be part of this? And where are the, the number of children that'll, that'll be that? And how would it, how will it affect parks and a, as we continue to grow? We continue to, you know, what was it, the 600 house, single family houses that we're going to talk about, I think, tonight is the second reading, but, and, and as we're expanding to that part of it? How do our partners continue to, to measure that growth? Do we have specifically for this project, you know, a, a forecast that we can estimate how many students will be coming out of this area?
So if you look at the, we have our comprehensive plan, our joint communities all have that. So we, we look ahead to what areas are going to be residential, where the apartment's going to be, that type of thing, and they can extrapolate numbers from that. Obviously, it's never perfect, because different things will happen. But by and large, by zoning and by shapes Sioux Falls and comprehensive planning, you kind of know where the homes are going to be, you kind of know where the apartment's going to be, and you can figure out the amount of population from there. Then you extrapolate parks and fire stations and schools and libraries from that.
Thank you.
We had one more staff.
Absolutely.
I know, you come, you want to speak? I know there was a question you wanted to answer.
Sure. Just to answer the, the question you asked first, is who are we building, or who is Kelly building these houses for? And when we talk about housing and addressing solutions within housing inventory across the city, we got to look at the different buckets and the different tools we have for each one. So we have partnerships with Affordable Housing Solutions to sell subsidized houses for 80% AMI and under. Lynn with Seacog has AMIs that she targets 80% and under as well. We have other partners that are in the 65 and under range, and then there's tax credit apartments that, that are subsidized with different grants or loan programs that, that target, you know, the 30, 40, 50, and 60% AMI and under. What this TIF does, this helps us address that, that area, and, and we're not income testing these, these individuals, but there's no tool really for 80 to 100, to 80 to 110% AMI. And so for the people that would be interested in purchasing these houses, this is kind of the price point where they're going to be looking at. So that, that's the tool in that, that range of incomes that we're, we're looking at, and it, it addresses several tenants of the 2026 Housing Action Plan, and, and the, the prices worked out that we have a 60 to 100% of the first time home buyer this first time, which was a pretty positive result.
So is that, would that be then the people that are graduating from Dr. Griggs's program that was just here? You sat through the, the presentation with STI. Will those folks, when they graduate from STI, have the income that it takes to be first time home buyers in this neighborhood? Who, who is it? I mean, what are we, you know, I get we're trying to, to fill it all out, but, I mean, are we looking at people who are nurses and firefighters and police, first time police officers that are buying new homes? Is it, where is that income range that, that fits? What, what does it, what annual income does it take to finance a, a $300,000 house?
That depends a lot, based on family size, credit score, and just where most people are in life. But for a $300,000 house, that falls well underneath the first time home buyer limits is set by the state of South Dakota. So right in that 80 to 100% range for home buy, for AMI, the, the, the houses that are, that are going for sale, that are 80% AMI and under, you're looking at 225 with some second mortgages on them. So this steps in right where that ends with, with these three layer of, of price ranges for the homes.
Thank you so much for being fast, councillor Neitz.
Before you leave, could you state your name for the record?
Sorry, Logan Penfield.
Thank you, Logan. Councillor Neitz.
Thank you. Well, once again, you know, I think obviously the developer's taken a heck of a risk here, particularly in the out years. So it's going to be interesting to see how this works out, and then to see, you know, if others can have an appetite to do it. We may have to look and see if there's ways in which we can help them hedge their risk and, you know, hold harmless, things like that. I don't think it should be discounted, that it's a big deal that you're going to get a lot of density. We, we tend to build traditional neighborhoods like mine, which are frankly, long-term liabilities to the city. The taxes they generate really don't pay for all the infrastructure, so we need more density. So this will be a good, a good thing to be trying. But I have two final questions. First for Dustin, not that I don't, you know, trust Kelly, I like Kelly, but the, the question is, how do you ensure that the savings gets to the end user? Meaning that it's not just, you know, that the savings from the TIF ends up drawing down the cost of the housing? Can you see that with pro formas? I mean, how do you, you know?
Yeah, we, we've reviewed Kelly's pro formas based on the, the, the cost of construction for these homes and what he would typically sell them for, right? And, and what this TIF is, is essentially filling is that gap between those numbers. You know, the, the homes being sold for 232,000 or not, are less than his cost to build those. And so, you know, we're, we're factoring that in to get to the gap that we're essentially financing through the TIF, and then justifying that based off the infrastructure costs, because that's what we can pay for. So there's, this gets Kelly back to, you know, if he were to build these and sell them at the price he was going to sell them at, at market for what it costs to build, then this, this essentially breaks him even at that point. And so that's his point of if costs continue to escalate, now he's starting to lose his profits again associated with this project.
Okay. Perfect. And then buyer covenants, the trick with any covenants is how are they enforced?
Yeah, and so, you know, really, the biggest thing that we're trying to enforce with the covenants, right? There's, there's kind of three things. You know, we want them to be owner occupied. We want them to not be rented for those, those five years, because we're, we're just having those covenants on there for the five years. But the biggest thing that we're, we're wanting to do with those covenants is the pricing, right? We want to maintain that pricing for that five-year period, still allowing someone, if they wanted to sell their home, to get that housing price index, make a little bit of money on that original purchase price, but ultimately kind of bringing that in. And so when that covenant's placed on the property, anytime that property comes up for sale, the title, the title company, based on the deed restriction that we'll place on, on these properties, will have to contact the city that it's being sold. And so then we can, can make sure that the price is being reflected in the future for that property. So it'd be restricted by that covenant for that five-year period, and we would, we would learn of that as, or if any of these homes came up for sale within that five-year period.
Okay. Well, so I think it covers part of it, but as an example, home must be primary residence, cannot rent home to another party. So somebody living there rents it out to somebody else, I, who is going to be the police, the cop on the beat, who's going to say, you can't do that? And what would be the consequence? I mean, how are you supposed to, I mean, what are you going to do with victim? I mean?
Yeah, our enforceability of, of that piece of it's going to be a little bit trickier, right? Because, you know, we would need to know that they're renting it out, which is, you know, difficult with, you know, if you look, review some of our other zoning ordinances that talk about how many people can occupy a home, things like that, they're difficult to enforce unless reported. And so we could always do some check-ins on the property, you know, call the property owners. There's things that we can do with the housing staff. You know, they enforce our other housing programs, so we'll work with them on trying to, you know, bring that, as much enforcement as we can to that. The other thing that, you know, we have to realize is, we all are also, you know, the, the TIF is built to refund Kelly for his cost and to buy down the pricing, but we're also placing the covenant on the buyer, you know? And so if that, if that buyer were to not follow, you know, the renting piece of this, who, who's the applicable person that we would potentially punish? It's a diff, we're not going to impact Kelly's finances, and we don't want to impact that buyer as well. So I think it's something that we're trying to encourage this as much as possible while we also know there's limits to what we can actually restrict. We could make this very restrictive and have all that teeth in there. Who's going to buy the homes from the developer if we put all those restrictions on there? So we have to be realistic about some of those with, again, the important piece of this is the purchase price is really what we're trying to target, but while also restricting those other uses as well.
Well, I, I get that, and I don't want to be punitive, but, you know, so if I, with my mortgage, that's callable. So at least my lender has some leverage against me. If he finds out, you know, if they find out I'm violating it, renting it out, they could call the mortgage. I mean, if they really want it, you know, and they could really drop the hammer on me. But in this particular case, obviously, you know, it's not about being punitive, but the whole point is we want people in there that really need it, and they're not using it. I mean, obviously, sometimes people might get in trouble, and they might rent it out or whatever, because they're legitimately in financial trouble and trying to avoid foreclosure. But you don't want somebody who's using it essentially as a rental property, who got in the door, and then two months later, they're out, and you have enough, no enforcement mechanism besides telling them that they're violating their, this deal, but you, I mean, what are you going to do? I mean, you can't call the mortgage, you're not the lender, so just that you have something that people can't take advantage of the program. That's all I'm suggesting.
Yep. So we'll continue to look at that.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, staff, for working really hard on this. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for taking a chance to do this, to try and fit that niche that we need. Council, as you know, we always shoot for 525 to cut off to get to public comment, so we are going to push off the committee reports and council remarks till next week. So at this time, if there's anybody for public comment, you have up to five minutes to talk on any one of these three subjects.
How disturbing is this, right? Seacog, it's not very good people to partner up with. Affordable Housing Solutions is not either, because they dump their trashy properties in my neighborhood all the time. The law states if they can get a TIF, they can get a TIF. There's no argument about a TIF. While we're running into a problem when we do neighborhood audits to get people compliant on their houses, people cannot afford the upkeep of their houses. Just in my neighborhood, we had 60-something violations of not homeowners not being able to keep up. And affordable housing, to me, is for your rich and people. It's sure as hell not for your poor people, so you couldn't put affordable housing in Pettigrew or Whittier Cathedral, because nobody can afford $250,000 to $300,000 income. I have a lady that works for a bearing, she's been there for years as a nurse, and she that works for a bearing. She's been there for years as a nurse, and she could barely afford her house at $275,000. I have someone that works for the police department that lives in Oakview Neighborhood Association. I just bought his house and barely made it at $272,000. Him and his wife. We can't tell people how to build in in the city. But we need to start thinking about not the higher end people and to the lower income people. And what is happening is there are some people that buy houses, and they do rent them out. We have some in Oakview, in Whittier neighborhood, that they're doing that in. They can't afford their mortgage payment, then they rent it out to their friends, and it becomes a rental property. And then when you call the bank, there's nothing the bank can do about it. So that is going on in Whittier neighborhood. I can vouch for that. So 300 $250, $300,000 is sure not going to be a police officer, a fireman, or a nurse. Like I said, there's one person on that police department force that just bought their house at barely at $270,000. We have that girl that works as an RN in the nurse field that could barely afford her house. So this is not for your average middle class working citizens. These are for your high end rich people. When we keep saying affordable housing, we need more affordable housing, all we're doing is pushing out the middle class poor people and putting in the rich people in the neighborhoods. And it has to stop. You go to bigger cities, that's what bigger cities do to get the slums out and the hoods out, is by putting affordable housing in there, because people cannot afford 250 to $333,000. And then when all of these houses collapse, or they deteriorate after years, then here comes CCOG and them, and they restore it, and then they drop it off in our in our neighborhood and and restore it in the neighborhoods and take it off people's properties. And here you go, we're always with the trash in neighborhoods. We can't revise pedigree and way there like that. So developers saying that work with CCOG and Affordable Housing Solutions, I'm not fond of either one of them, because they're not for your average people. I know they're trying to buy up properties in my neighborhood to push out the poor people. And I have to stop it, because they want to buy them out with cash, and then take the house and move them over, and then put affordable housing at 250 to $333,000. You don't do something like that. We, I mean, this is wine drinkers here, and not wine drinkers coming out of a box. When are we going to get to the beer drinkers? And when we're going to get to the cores of the neighborhoods? This is sickening. It really is sickening. And they want to say, why we have crime in the neighborhoods far? Why they want to redevelop and revitalize neighborhoods, then they need to come in the high crime poor areas and try to work with apartments and not to rebuild so where everybody can afford properties and rent. This is very disturbing in so many ways. So no, a police officer or somebody on that police department force cannot afford it. I just told you this, because I know somebody personally just bought that house over there, cannot afford this. How are we going to keep our right now? We have on on one rental property that I help oversee, we got three police officers that live on that property in the apartment complex, because they cannot afford to buy a house. We have three of them on the southeast side of town. So it doesn't matter if these officers get paid 20 or 30 or 35 dollars an hour. They cannot afford it.
Any other public input? Seeing none? We adjourn.